It is 6:30 on August 7th. I declare the Willmar City Council meeting open. Roll call.
Mr. Mayor, we have eight members present, one absent. Mayor Reese is excused from the meeting.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote on the motion.
Oh, there it is. That motion passes. Eight ayes, zero nays.
All right, thank you. Clerk Thompson, would you go over the items on the consent agenda tonight?
Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem, and members of the council. On tonight's consent agenda, we have for council's approval, the City Council minutes of July 17th, City Council work session minutes of July 10th, Planning Commission minutes of June 21st, Planning Commission draft minutes of July 19th, Willmar Charter Commission draft minutes of July 27th, Willmar Municipal Utilities Commission minutes of July 24th, the Accounts Payable Report from July 13th through August 2nd, Pennock Lions Club lawful gambling application, the Knights of Columbus lawful gambling application, consideration of sale of THC product license to Super Value Incorporated doing business as Cub Foods, and a resolution declaring support for the completion of Glacier Lakes Trail and for council's information in Candy Ojai County. Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
That motion carries. Eight ayes, zero nays.
Is there anyone for open forum this evening?
There is no one that signed up for this evening.
All right. Let's move on to the public hearing then on the ordinance amending the Willmar Municipal Code. Mr. Box.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Tonight's first public hearing, this is, as you had mentioned, an amendment, proposed amendment to the THC portion of our municipal code. This is, and as a result of the 2023 legislative session, with, which comes with some adjustments to mere state statute language. The adjustments or the amendments proposed in the ordinance that will affect really our day-to-day are the permitting of sale of THC products at exclusive liquor stores, clarifying the age verification process, and then just changing some language within how THC products are stored at retail locations. So again, this is to mere state statute with our already existing ordinance. I'll stand for any questions.
All right. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak during this hearing? Anyone from the public? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn things over to the council.
I'll make a motion to adopt, assign a number, and publish the ordinance.
Second.
Here we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Butterfield.
On the exclusive liquor store that's crossed off, what's all that pertaining?
Sure. So an exclusive liquor store is defined in state statute. Essentially what it is, is what can and cannot be sold in a liquor store. There, I don't have the list in front of you, but there are specific items that pertain to exclusive liquor stores, and that is listed out in state statute. The THC products is an amendment added to what can be sold in exclusive liquor stores.
Okay.
Councilmember O'Brien?
Is there a difference between that and municipal liquor store?
The off-sale portion of it would still be an exclusive liquor store. We do not have a municipal liquor store here in Willmar, so it would not pertain to us.
Okay. Is there a discussion about a municipal liquor store?
For the city of Willmar?
Yeah.
No, we would not, we do not qualify.
Okay.
Any further comments or questions? Are we ready to vote?
Just waiting for Councilmember Ask.
It hasn't come on my screen.
Do you want to just do a voice vote?
Aye.
Okay. That motion carries. Eight ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. Looking for a motion to publish by summary.
I move to publish by summary.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Still waiting on Councilmember Fagerly and Ask.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. That motion carries. Seven ayes, zero nays.
All right. Next on our agenda is a public hearing considering an ordinance regulating massage therapy business here in Willmar. Chief Velt.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and members of the council. The item tonight before you is your consideration of the public hearing of proposed adoption of an ordinance regulating both massage therapists and massage therapy businesses in Willmar. The proposed ordinance would help protect many legitimate massage therapists and businesses in our community, provide for health and sanitation needs, and help prevent criminal activity. As stated in the past introduction of the ordinance, the city of Willmar has several massage therapy businesses. Most operate as legitimate entities, but our agency has taken a number of complaints regarding some that operate with questionable business practices. Various massage businesses across the state have been used as fronts for prostitution, human trafficking, and money laundering by criminal entities. Unfortunately, our community is not immune from this and has a pending court case against one business owner for charges of prostitution, disorderly house, and financial transaction card fraud. In looking at the ordinance in brief, some requirements would be to, both a massage therapist and a massage therapy business would be licensed. There would be exceptions for various medical professionals and facilities to operate without a license. Businesses and individual therapists would have insurance requirements. They would have educational and standard certification requirements. They'd be subject to a brief and confidential criminal history check. There'd be a license fee set by the council, and I believe that's later on in the agenda if the proposed ordinance is enacted. Requirement that therapists must be at least 18 years old. Requirements for specific areas of the body to be covered, and prohibitions of intentional touching of specific body areas. Be setting operational hours for the facilities, sanitation requirements, inspection authority, and the prohibition of explicit advertising for those businesses. So this is kind of a broad overview of the ordinance. Various massage therapy practitioners in our area have expressed support for such an ordinance and the requirements noted. We also feel this would be a valuable tool in both prevention and removal of businesses that operate in unsafe, unsanitary manners or may be involved in criminal activity. And we'd recommend that after the public hearing that the council adopt the ordinance, assign a number and publish, and if approved, we ask the ordinance be published by summary.
Thank you, chief. Is there anyone here from the public that wishes to speak on this matter? All right. I'll turn things over to the council table then. Close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance regulating massage therapy businesses and massage therapists and assign a number and publish.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further conversation? Roll call.
That motion carries. Seven ayes, zero nays.
I'll make a motion to publish the ordinance by summary.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further conversation? Roll call.
Did we have a second on that for summary? Okay, sorry. That motion also carries. Seven ayes, zero nays.
All right. We're moving on to our third and final public hearing for the evening. Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Good evening, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and members of the council. So tonight is really just kind of cleaning up a preliminary final plat that was approved recently from the Planning Commission, and so this is a public hearing to vacate public easements on preserve on 24th first edition plat. And so when I say this is just something to clean up, a final plat, so when plats are initially platted and then replatted, sometimes, oftentimes what happens is along the boundaries, the utility takes easements along the property lines. And so initially, there were four parcels here, and then it was subdivided and replatted to two parcels. And so this isn't, this isn't something that we're requiring. This is something that their attorney is asking for, that they would like their plats to be free and clear. And so this is something that was asked for by their attorney, and this is the process that Mayor Attorney Scott thought best with initiating the public hearing and clearing the plats. And so I've reached out and I've talked to WMU about the easements and replating them and getting the easements on the, along the new boundaries. They're okay with it, and they are supportive of this motion. And so I guess with that, I'll turn over you for any questions just about vacating the easements.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Any member of the public wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing none. Counsel, what are your wishes? Close the public hearing. Thank you.
I move to vacate the old public easements.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any conversation? Roll call.
Yeah. Thank you. So I do want to point out, so the resolution as presented in the packet, there were some additions that me and Attorney Scott identified that need to be made. And I, so I guess like the motion should be to approve, I guess, to vacate the easements like with the resolution, but I guess like with minor changes from Attorney Scott. So those are the only additions to it.
Are you okay with that addition to your motion?
I am okay with that.
All right. And the second?
Yes.
All right. Attorney Scott.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. The only additions to this resolution are going to be to clarify the legal description of the easements to be vacated and to note that this is by property owner petition. I think their formalities and the summary provided by Director Walker is right on.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Roll call.
That motion carries. Seven ayes, zero nays.
All right. We'll move on to a presentation. Thank you, Mr. Walker, on Grass Lake from Mr. Engleby.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, council and staff. Thank you for your time. My name is Lauren Engleby, and as recent as last Friday, I'm retired from Candy Ojai County employment. So I'm here as a citizen to talk about, thank you, to talk about a project that I've been involved with, I hate to admit, 29 years in different capacities through several administrations and so on and so forth. I have a map of the area that I'd like to hand out to you, and if I can just drop them off, we can, oh, okay. Great, thank you. So the Grass Lake project got started, the discussions got started prior to my employment in 1993 here, and, but in 1993, there were several agency people and stakeholders that wanted to talk a little bit more in detail about the project. And the state of Minnesota, through the Board of Water and Soil Resources, had started taking easements, perpetual conservation easements on some of the lands out there. The landowners were voluntarily coming into the office and wanting to know more about the easement programs, and so they were being piecemealed together. Then we got to a point where if this is going to be a good project, let's try and get all the property that's necessary to do a full-blown easement restoration or wetland restoration of this area. And it took several years to do that, a lot of money, and a lot of headaches and bumps in the road, but we did end up restoring the lake bed as you see it here in the map. And in the fall of 2021, I shut the gate and started filling the lake, the lake bed with water. And as you know, in 2022, in May, like May 12th, I think we had eight or some inches of rain, and it filled up right away. And then, of course, it filled up again this spring when we had the fast snow melt and warm temperatures in the, in the spring. I'd like to start now at the top of the page here on the map and work in a counterclockwise fashion. So at the top of the map here, you see County Road 23. I believe that's also Willmar Avenue. And then you can see the city of Willmar on the west side of Trunk Highway bypass. But I'd like to start at the word flow that comes in from the, from the upper right. That flow of water is what we call Peach Creek, and there are two little tributaries to that. One goes through the Gimsey Edition, and one goes by Haug Implement, and those, those go east quite a ways towards the town of Candy Ojai. There's 100 feet of fall from the town of Candy Ojai to Willmar or to Grass Lake. You wouldn't, you wouldn't feel that. You don't feel it when you're driving on Highway 12, but there is 100 feet of fall in this, in that watershed. It's about 7,500 acres of watershed, and it's fast water. So when that water comes through Peach Creek and down here in that lake bed area where it flattens out, that water pushes every which direction it wants to, and I've seen water back, go backwards at Little Dukes in the storm drain or in the storm sewer pipe there several times over the last 30 years. I've seen manhole covers blown off because of the water pressure and the stormwater system was, was so great. When that happens, you get, you get flooding in Willmar, you get flooding in outlying lands as well. The nice thing about, and this is probably the most thing I'll touch on several times here tonight, but the most important thing here, I believe, especially for the city of Willmar, is taking that 7,500 acres of, of fast watershed offline. We put it into Grass Lake Gravity Flow so it no longer finds the main ditch from behind Walmart and the one that goes through the lake bed and goes to Wakanda. It doesn't compete for capacity anymore. So we took 7,500 acres offline, put it into Grass Lake. Now the ditch system can handle the water coming from Willmar a lot, lot better. And from staff, I've heard that last year and this year, they, they expected more flooding in the streets, but they didn't see it. Well, we had events that would have really caused some flooding in Willmar. It's hard to quantify. It's hard to prove, but the nice thing for me is hearing from your staff that, that they expected flooding and didn't see it last year and this year. So we do know that it's a huge benefit to the city of Willmar in regards to storm, storm water. When we brought that water from Peach Creek in to Grass Lake, we run it through a stormwater detention pond, so hopefully the, the heavy sediments will drop out in there before the water actually got, gets out into Grass Lake. So that little pond is going to be a lot easier to maintain if, when the time comes. The second flowage on the, on the west side of the bypass, right by Schweeder's, it used to be a county branch, a county ditch, and that is too low. We can't get that water into, into Grass Lake Gravity Flow. So then, we had to reroute it around the west side of the, the lake basin, and that red line there, Branch 3 tile, that's where we rerouted that water. It's a 60-inch, so it's a five-foot diameter tile pipe going nearly three-quarters of a mile. That takes the low-flow water from the golf course in that, that area of the new middle school neighborhood. But when that water gets really high, when we have a big rain event in that part of the, the city, the water comes up, the ditch, ditch water comes up, and it can spill out, the high water can spill out into Grass Lake. So we do have some stories, and we do have some treatment in that regard. But otherwise, under small events, half inch, one inch, inch and a half inch rain, the, the water goes around through that pipe. The other flow is the one behind Walmart. That's the main ditch coming from, from Walmart. There's a lot of water coming there, and that ditch system is flat. So the only thing that moves through there, makes it move through, is head pressure, not more than gravity, much more than gravity. So when the water comes up, it pushes. It pushes for elbow room, pushes the water downstream. When that water in that ditch gets so high, it'll spill out into this stormwater overflow area behind the AG Church, and that's close to 200 acres in size of temporary storage. So it's temporary. It means that it's, it's available for storage. When the ditch water comes up, the ditch, the water spills over the bank, and then it's allowed to go back in the ditch when Lake Wakanda goes down. I'll back up a little bit here. The light blue color you see here is what we consider permanent water. That water is controlled by a water control structure. So that's permanent water. The area behind the AG Church is temporary storage. The green boundary line there is the boundary of the project of, of all the conservation easements, which includes upland acres, upland where nesting habitat is. Then about in the, as you can see here, the black lettering and the lines for the embankments, those are all earthen embankments that we built to either contain or hold water at one side or another. And we did several embankments out there. County ditch 23 Main then was relocated through the south on that red line, as you can see. So the low-flow water still goes to Lake Wakanda like, like it always has, but far less of that water goes to Lake Wakanda. A lot of it is now at Grass Lake. At about the 5 o'clock position, you'll see water control structure. That is a poured-in-place concrete water control structure that contains the water in Grass Lake on a permanent level. There are roughly two and a half feet, three feet of water out there at any given time unless it evaporates. So then, when, when the water leaves the lake bed, it meets the main ditch and goes to Lake Wakanda now. The engineers, through all this process, were saying that it, the restoration of Grass Lake would take at least a half a foot of bounce during a large storm event off of Lake Wakanda. So we've got a lot less shoreline erosion there. And then, of course, we've got a lot less water that's being pushed back up into, into Willmar, so the Willmar's storm water can function much more efficiently. They also estimated that phosphorus reductions would be about 90%, 91%. And then sediment reductions would be in that 60% range. So there is a, there's a huge benefit in terms of water quality and water quantity with this project. I do have two short videos, a four-minute video of a drone and a two-minute video that shows you this from a bird's eye view, and whether we want to, if, if you have questions, we can do it now, or we can do it after the video or during the video. But should we start the video?
Yeah, please start the video.
Okay, thank you. This was done just a couple of weeks ago, and right now, we're above the water control structure. You can see city of Willmar in the background, but this is the heart of Grass Lake right here. This is what it looks like at full service level. Some people think it looks like a stinky old swamp, but in, in, in a crazy person's mind like mine, this is a beautiful wetland restoration. The habitat that it provides, the waterfall that it's out there, and, and the green that's floating there is duck, duckweed, and that is an indicator of pretty good water quality. It's, it's not like algae that indicates poor water quality. So the ducks and frogs and turtles are just numerous. The, yeah. So here's, here's the old shoreline of the lake bed, and it goes around this peninsula. We'll fly a little closer. There's the water control structure. We'll fly a little closer to this island. This is a 40-acre island that was there prior to Grass Lake being drained. By the way, it was drained in about 1906, and then improved again in 1955. But historically, it was about five feet deep, and now we have about two and a half to three feet of permanent water back out there. That's, that's as much as we could do. That's really all we wanted to do, because if you get too much water in there, then it's open water, and you don't have the vegetation to, to eat up some of the nutrients that do, that does come in there. So this is a nice big oak island. Lot of mature oaks in there that are hundreds of years old, and the old county ditch here, another county ditch over there that have now been abandoned. And so you can see the cattails, the old ditch bank. I mean, the nesting cover there is tremendous. And matter of fact, where the old city brush dump was on the east side of the bypass, if you know where that's at, the little gravel pit there, there's an eagle's nest up, up in there now. About two years ago, it came, came in. So like they say, if you build it, they will come, right? I hope that's what happened there. But, ooh, that was fast. So now we're looking to the southeast, Lake Wakanda in the background. So it's, it's kind of a neat perspective. It's such a large area, the, the map you have in front of you is, the project area is two miles north and south and three miles east and west. It's within that, that large of an area. So there's about 850 acres of permanent water and about 200, 250 acres of this temporary water, temporary storage. And one, a nice bit of information, a fact, is that when, when Grass Lake is up to its service level, so it's just starting to trickle over the dam, the water control structure, if we get a 100-year event, rain event, which is like 4.7 inches of rain within 24-hour period of time, that water will be stored into Grass Lake, and the structure is built such that it'll only let out 10% of that 100-year storm event at any given time. So we have, we have a lot of room to grow, even though the water's going over the water control structure. We have two and a half feet of water and elbow room for that lake to swell, and even in a 100-year storm event. So the property owners are, are pretty happy with the habitat, and their hunting and recreational opportunities. We haven't had a, a person from the university do some bird watching, did a survey of the different kinds of birds, short birds and so forth. And, but this, I expect by the bypass, you see more, more cattails, there's more cattail choked over there. I expect that to look a lot more like this in coming years, whether muskrats are going to open it up, or whether the cattails are just going to slowly die out. But a good wetland restoration has a mixture of vegetation and open water, and the vegetation is really good for eating up some of the nutrients that does come in there. The other video is, is about two minutes long, and it shows a little bit more of the water control structure. While we're doing that, I, I remember a fact that I learned several years ago, and when we talk about mosquitoes, yeah, there's mosquitoes. And when we talk about mosquitoes, yeah, there's mosquitoes. They're going to be hatched out here. There's no denying that. But gallon for gallon, there are fewer mosquitoes hatched out of a healthy wetland than there is out of a tire or a pot bottle or a water bottle that's laying in the road ditch. Because in that pot bottle or water bottle, there are no other critters in there to eat that mosquito larva, but there are in a healthy wetland. So gallon for gallon, but there's still a bajillion mosquitoes hatched out here. So you can see that where the old county ditch was, the banks are now nesting habitat. And we're zooming in, we're coming in on the water control structure now. And it, just the other day, it was just barely trickling over that structure. Most of that lake bed was farmed at one time, and the property owners put in lift pump stations, and they just couldn't keep up. Every time it rained, it'd flood and then flood out their crops. So that kind of prompted them to get more and more interested in the conservation programs. Okay, the final view here, back towards the city, and then we'll go down to the water control structure. There's a lot of debris on there now that kind of settles. That will probably wash off next time the water level comes up. We did put fish fingers on the structure to keep the carp from migrating up and over. But when the water in the ditch is high, I think those carp can still get in there. So hopefully, through the winter, they'll freeze out, they'll die. But they're like beavers. They're pretty smart. They can survive. So there's the structure. There's a valve on there that we can open once a year to let the water down in the fall, so we can anticipate some snow melt and spring rain, and we can provide a little bit more capacity there. So that's pretty much it, 30 years' worth. So it's a fun project. It was, at times, at times. Do you have any questions of me or of the project?
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. Next steps, I mean, what do we have to do to keep, make sure we are doing, if there are other things we need to do in Wilmer or?
Yeah, good question. And what we have here in our backyard is a tremendous resource and tremendous benefit to the community and the state. I think what you folks have been doing for several years with stormwater detention ponds on lots that are an acre or larger, having those make a big difference. They're little pieces of a puzzle, but it's a million-piece puzzle. And you've got to keep putting them together before you're complete with the puzzle. Your rain gardens and the things that you talk about, in that regard, are all good. They're all very, very beneficial. And anytime that you can do things like that or a stormwater, I think at Diamond Lake Park, they put in some large tanks or pipes underneath the play area there to capture water, and then it percolates out before it gets into the lake. Anything you can do to detain stormwater and take out some of the nutrients and then relieve some of the water pressure is great. So I think what you've been doing is great.
No man-made lake between Wilmer and Candy Ojai to stop the flow coming in?
Well, there is a lake up there, but it hasn't been restored, and the property owners at this point just simply don't want to participate. So piecemealing things together, but doing a little incremental things makes a huge difference in the end.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember O'Brien.
This is mind-boggling. I used to tramp through this area, work this area, and to see this like this from aerial view is amazing. Mr. Ringleby, I mean, 30 years, but to get all of these people on board, I mean, that was the difficult part. I mean, I remember very well.
A few gray ones over there. Yeah.
It's not just the people, the farmers either, it was all the different groups of people. You know, it was amazing. This project is absolutely amazing. Hats off to you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Davis.
I want to say thank you for this presentation. I had no idea this was right by our city. And it's amazing how it's helping us. And I want to thank you for your years of service and happy retirement.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to echo that thanks. And I know, Lauren, that there were times when you just wanted to throw your hands up and walk away from it. And thanks for persevering. And I know that some of the gray in the beard is from this project. And, yeah, just the city, most people don't know, but it, thank you.
Thank you very much. I do appreciate that. And I hope the people that are watching here, the public, I hope they get a little better handle on this and understand that it was a lot of money, a long time of coming, but it benefited a lot of people, a lot of people. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Walker, MB Rail Park Edition.
Thank you. All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem, members of the council. So this is the MB Rail Park Edition major subdivision. So first, I just want to go over the requirements of a subdivision, of a major subdivision, and then what the requirements are for approving a major subdivision. So what makes this a major subdivision? So this is the land out there that's going to eventually be the future of Wilmer Rail Park. And so off of State Highway 40, which is one of the main things that triggers it to be a major subdivision, then also utilities have to be extended to it as well that make it a major subdivision and not a minor subdivision. So then, from there, what it takes to approve a major subdivision, there is a public hearing required, and it must be heard at council. So there is a, the public hearing is heard at the planning commission level. And so we've already held the, we've already held the public hearing at the planning commission. It was approved by planning commission, and then S has just, it's an item at the council level. So from there, I just want to make it very clear. So we've had some hiccups come in the approval process with the final plat. And so as you all know, you all have approved work for Bolton and Mink to extend the approach that we got the grant for out to the Wilmer Rail Park. And through that, MinDOT would like to see some adjustments to the south property line that are on the plat that is in your packet. And I guess the approval tonight should come with contingencies that, I guess, because this is going to go back to the planning commission, be looked at, reviewed, and approved. But tonight's approval from you all should come with the understanding that there will be an adjustment to the south property line to accommodate the approach that MinDOT is recommending for the Wilmer Rail Park. And then I guess also, just from a budgetary standpoint, staff is still waiting on the park dedication fees associated with this subdivision as well. So with that, turn it over to you all for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. So the southern boundary is Highway 40, correct?
Correct.
So what adjustments are we looking at along there?
Yeah, so Jared can speak to that a little more.
Evening, Mayor, council. As Justice indicated, the city did successfully receive a grant for the construction of a turn lane into the facility. That design is ongoing. MinDOT ditch standards are ultimately what's requiring the south property line to move further north. You are correct that it will be trunk highway 40. But ultimately, what we're talking about tonight is the southern property boundary that's shown on the plat in your packet is going to be adjusted approximately 10 to 20 feet north.
Other questions, comments? Go ahead, Councilmember Osmas.
Is there something that's timely, that we need to vote on this tonight? Or would it make more sense to wait for these two corrections to be made and then vote on it after it comes from, or does it have to get made before it goes back to planning?
Yeah, so I guess initially, we thought about pulling it, but I guess if we just approve it upon the contingencies, since in the grand scheme of things, it's not, it's the ingress and egress, but it's really just the property line moving 10 to 20 feet. It's not like more, if more lots are being added and more acreage are being added, and then like the sale was changing, I think that would trigger like a full stop and we'd pull it. But I think just kind of with, talking amongst ourselves tonight, staff felt that, I mean, this is a minor enough change that we can approve it with contingency, then it still has to go back to the planning commission, and will be checked by staff, and then the recommendation will be made. So I mean, it's going to go through the entire process kind of at the lower level. So I mean, engineering after approval, engineering, fire, police, utilities again, and then also the planning staff will look at it and then present it to the planning commission. So I mean, it will be checked thoroughly before it is approved again.
Okay. And then it will just be in our consent agenda, and it doesn't have to come back for another vote then?
No, I mean, I guess it could come back for information purposes, but that's the point of asking for approval contingent upon that review. That'll happen at a later date.
Looking for a motion on what we want to do?
I would make the motion to approve the subdivision with the contingencies.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further conversation? Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. Just, is there two contingencies, one the lot line and one the park dedication fees, or is it just one contingency?
Yeah, there'd be two. Yeah, there'd be two. Yeah. So, yeah, so there'd be the lot line change and then also like the park dedication fees just because that is like the obligation associated with subdivisions.
All right, looks like we have the vote on our screens. Go ahead and vote.
That motion carries eight ayes, zero nays.
All right, thank you, Mr. Walker. Mr. Vogi, airport apron expansion project.
Nope.
Nope, for that I went overseas. Updated memo of understanding with the National Guard. Mr. Walker, you're still with us.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. All right, so just want to give you all an update. So after the last meetings, so the last time, this was before you all, there was a lot of discussion around 80 acres, 40 acres, what the swap is going to be, the technical difficulties with getting it approved through the Army, all of those things. And so from that, I went back and I talked to the Minnesota National Guard about just kind of what the discussion was at council, and then talking with them about where they're at and what their timeline was. And so like I kind of alluded to in the meeting, it was a real possibility that they come back and they said, instead of the 40, that they would need the 80, and that it could be an expedited timeline. Turns out, that is the case. So talking to them about what they want to do, so they've had deals and other cities fall apart, and it is expediting their timeline for an additional facility to be built in conjunction with the facility that they're already planning. And so they look at Wilmer as an ideal location because of the, with the program at Ridgewater that supplies diesel mechanics for employment pipeline, it's something that they want to incorporate into their project for the facility. And so what they do is they build these massive machines, they fix these massive machines, but they also need places to test these machines. And so normally, in most cases, they'll have to lease land from farmers, and it's a really big pain because they have to put it on a truck, get other trucks, move it places, move it back. It's this whole rigmarole. And so they're like, we'd honestly like if we could just have the entire 80 acres, that would work out best for us. And when I say expedited timeline, instead of the 10 to 15 or even 25, could be two to three. So changes a lot of things, and I think tonight is really more, just kind of putting it on your radar that, or I guess we're really kind of seeking direction that, one, this could be an expedited timeline, could be for the entire 80, and I think there needs to be more of a discussion around, with the addition of the Wilmer Rail Park and the advancement of that, is this something, an investment that we see that makes sense to us? Is this something that we want to have? And I think with that, I mean, I think we probably need to understand more of like what the compensation's going to be. If that's just going to be a land swap, what are the technicalities around that? Are we just going to get a building out of this? And like, how much could we make off of 80 acres and everything in between? And so I think on that, I mean, that's the reason that I wanted to bring this back to you all, that way you guys can kind of understand that this has changed. And I mean, this is an expedited timeline. But I think like the memorandum of understanding is more of a non-binding agreement, that way it would allow both parties kind of talk through the technicalities of it. Because like I want to reiterate from the last meeting, they had a lot of approvals on their end that they needed to get. It was more than a dozen chain of command that all needed to approve it. It was going to take a really long time. They wouldn't have a real answer until they put together their construction schedule for next year, and then they'll have a better idea of what's going to happen. So a lot, a lot of moving parts. And then also, there's the technicality of, they don't really do land swaps. And so that'd be another thing. And so then with, it'd be me and Attorney Scott kind of working together and figuring out what that agreement would look like, just because once again, we don't want to give away an asset of 80 acres in our industrial park near the railroad without a firm understanding that we're going to get equal value for it or it's going to be worth it for us. And so I think if you all would like us to explore that a little more and kind of understand what that form of compensation's going to be for those 80 acres and understand what that agreement will look like, I think it makes sense to enter into the memorandum of understanding. That way, we can vet that. But I do think this will come down to, do we think giving 80 acres to the Minnesota National Guard makes sense when we have the rail park? And I guess it would take substantial development since this is to the north and west of the Wilmer Y project and all of that. But I think, I just wanted to make it very clear that the tone around the conversation and the substance of the conversation has changed with an expedited timeline and the wanting more acreage. So that, turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, for any questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Walker. Council questions, comments, motions?
I'll make a motion to approve the updated memorandum of understanding between the City of Wilmer and the Minnesota Army National Guard.
Councilmember Osmas.
I just, it'll be interesting to see what they come up with and what they come back with. This, yeah, pretty exciting that they're looking at another development, but it's 80 acres.
Yeah, it's 80 acres. It warrants discussion.
Yeah.
And the adjustment to the timeline is significant, which I see that as a positive development. Did I understand you correctly that the National Guard does not do land swaps?
They do not do land swaps. And so it has to be fair market value. So then we would have to get the land assessed, and then essentially, what they would give us would be against what we say the land is worth. And so then that could end up with them writing us a check, et cetera. But there's a lot of variables to it. And so I mean, there's a lot of work on our end to kind of vet out if it makes sense. And then like I said, it starts with figuring out what 80 acres is worth. And then let's say, because they only own, I'd say like the buildings to the north there. And so then to get the entire stretch of land, all those buildings, possible, but they have to bring in another government, federal government entity, and they have to haggle with them, and they have to get control of it, and then they have to give it to us. And so like I said, nothing about this, simple, a lot, very fluid, and a lot of different approvals. And then also just contingent upon how people feel in their careers and what they're going to do, so.
Other discussion? Go ahead, Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you. So shouldn't we go view their property first before we make a decision?
Yeah, so, yeah, so tonight's not, I guess like isn't like the permanent decision. I mean, that can definitely be incorporated into the vetting process of deciding if this is something we really want, is this something that we want against the 80 acres? But yeah, I think tonight would be the first step in that vetting process that would include visits and kind of understanding kind of more on our end, just because I think there's a real possibility that we just go, actually, this is really cool, but no thanks. This is something that we'd rather, we'd rather do something else with 80 acres, and I think that's fair.
All right, the motion is before us, and I encourage you to vote at this time.
That motion carries eight ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Vogi and the airport.
Good evening again, council. And your packets this evening is the change order number one for the airport apron expansion project. The change order results in the relocation of a Jet A Fuel System Control Panel, some drainage improvements, piping and structures, and then some unsuitable soils were encountered out at the airport. So that's what the change order encompasses, since this project was also funded as part of the city's entitlement dollars. There is a cost participation associated with it. Total change order amount is $53,830.25 of that due to the participation by the federal entities. of that due to the participation by the federal entities. The city's portion is $3,694.82 and staff is recommending approval of the change order. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I'll make a motion to approve the airport change order. Second.
Discussion. Go ahead, Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you. So the electrical panel, is that outside or is it in a building?
Outside. Yep.
So are we done located in a place that we don't have to?
Correct. That's correct. Yep, for the jet A fuel. Yep. Yep.
Jerry, could you tell us, do you have an idea of what the airport CIP fund, the balance in that account is?
Off the top of my head, no, I cannot.
Okay. I'm imagining it's going to cover $3,600.
It's an ex, I can assure you that it's an excess of $3,600.
I was more curious than anything other.
We'll bring that back for you guys.
Okay, thank you. All right, roll call.
That motion carries eight ayes, zero nays.
Thanks, counsel.
You. Chief Felth, you're back with the consideration of a resolution amending the fee schedule.
I'll sub in if that's okay. So the recommended action, this is a resolution amending the fee schedule. This is to reflect the adoption of the massage therapy ordinance earlier tonight. It is a proposed $200 business application fee and a $50 individual application fee. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution amending the 2023 fee schedule.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
That motion carries eight ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. And Ms. Thompson?
Before you, tonight is a request to introduce an ordinance that would codify the Wilmer Municipal Code. And that is a practice, a routine practice recommended by the League of Minnesota Cities to be done every 10 years and carried out in coordination with the Codification Service, which the city uses MuniCode Civic Plus currently. And it's not altering the substance of the city's ordinance. And we initiated the process two years ago and adopting the ordinance as a final step in completing the process. So staff's recommendation is to introduce ordinance and set public hearing for August 21st.
Looking for a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any conversation? All right, that is a roll call for the public hearing on August 21st.
That motion also carries eight ayes, zero nays.
All right, continue to item G.
Just a second. Second item is to introduce an ordinance amending the city code for the minor updates that were noticed during the codification process. We just err basically to update the city clerk position, remove transportation of firewood requirement, and change department terms from leisure services to parks and recreation. Included in your packet were, was the marked up ordinance in legislative print, so you could see where the changes were and also a clean copy. That's staff's recommendation to introduce the ordinance at the public hearing for August 21st. And a second action would be to publish by summary.
Is there a motion for the public hearing on August 21st?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, discussion? And roll call.
That motion passes, eight ayes, zero nays.
Looking for a motion to publish by summary?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
That motion also carries eight ayes, zero nays.
All right, thank you. Mr. Box, introducing an interim ordinance temporarily prohibiting the operation of cannabis business until January 1st of 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, counsel. So after following the 2023 legislative session, we're back again talking about cannabis. The new cannabis law authorizes local units of government to adopt an interim ordinance that may regulate, restrict, or prohibit the operation of cannabis businesses within the city of Wilmer until January 1st, 2025. After the last council meeting, staff received direction to proceed in this manner to bring back an ordinance with a moratorium or prohibiting operation cannabis businesses. And that's what you are seeing tonight is the introduction of that ordinance during this time. We may adopt this ordinance, interim ordinance, only after a public hearing is held. And he proposes that next public, the hearing will be held at its next regular meeting on August 21st at 6:30 PM. The cannabis law authorizes an interim ordinance, as I mentioned before, to continue until January 1st, 2025. And just to be clear, this is for, the purpose and intent of this ordinance is to temporarily prohibit registration of cannabis operation businesses within the city for the purpose of researching, studying, and considering the impacts and potential impacts of cannabis businesses in order to determine the necessary or appropriate reasonable restrictions and/or regulations in the city code at the time, on the time, place, and manner of operation of cannabis businesses in the city, as well as to consult with the newly elected cannabis office of cannabis management on a model ordinance, policy, and standardized forms for the registration of these businesses. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
All right, looking for a motion to set the public hearing for August 21st.
So moved.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second. Any conversation on this matter? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you. Just a question. In the meantime, we'll be looking at working with Candyai County and some following whatever's happening.
Absolutely. Yeah, we'll be working with county, with the state, making sure that we get this this ordinance right.
And I think I read, I mean, it's out to January of 2025, but we could change that if we, if there was a reason to.
Yep. If there was a reason and the council felt that we were ready to end that interim ordinance ordinance early, we could, the council could repeal.
Okay, thank you.
Other discussion? I have a quick question. You've mentioned a couple of times, just most recently here about a minute ago, about that we could, we could amend that January 1st, 2025 date. Is it advantageous to set that out and then lessen the date? Why not set the date for something sooner and then extend that period?
Sure. I think it, a lot of this hinges on when the opposite cannabis management is fully operational. We've heard anywhere between mid to late 2024. And that's, I think, why legislation put specific language of January 1st, 2025, so hoping the date would be online by then. I don't know if I want to set a shorter, would recommend setting a shorter date, just because if the state's not ready, then we can't be ready. But if if we were all ready at an earlier date, then we could come back and recommend a.
So the January 1st date, is that coming from the state?
That is in-state statute, yes. Yep. With this, with this particular interim ordinance, yes.
Are we ready to vote? Roll call.
That motion carries eight ayes, zero nays.
I'll make a motion to publish by summary.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Just waiting on Councilmember Fagerly. Would you like to do a voice vote?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries eight ayes, zero nays.
All right, Mr. Box, cannabis and hemp products in public places.
Thank you. This is another ordinance being introduced at the direction of council. Again, we had talked about what it looks like to prohibit the use of cannabis in certain THC prior hemp products in public places. And this is a draft ordinance prepared by the city attorney's office of what this could look like. This would create a new section in Wilmer's municipal code to prohibit the use of cannabis in certain hemp products in public places as defined within the proposed ordinance, which include largely any public places, places that are owned, managed, controlled by the city, and any building or outdoor space that is open to the public. And it continues to go on. It's not including, but not limited to streets, sidewalks, highways, alleys, parks, public areas, public buildings. So that's what this, that's, that's what this proposed ordinance would do. And just to clarify, it does not affect any of the use of, use of these products on private residents. So that would be outside of this, the control of this ordinance.
Looking for a motion to set the public hearing for August 21st?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
That motion passes, eight ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to publish by summary?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
That motion carries eight ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. All right, community pride announcements. Mr. Manzer, this is your last meeting as a city employee, is that correct?
So when you're here in two weeks, you'll be here as a citizen in every meeting following
that, right? Thank you so much for your leadership over the years. I've heard from just countless people how deep deeply the, this community respects you and you will certainly be missed. I'm sure I'm not the only one up here that's good. I want to say a couple of things to you, so. Yeah, you should at least stand up so we can say nice things to you.
Yeah, I guess I just got to say that I'm, it's going to be hard. I'm not lying. I, the people I worked with, it's like family to me. And I've always prided myself on making relationships instead of coworkers. And everybody that I have worked with, I care deeply about and I care deeply about this community. It's home to us and it will be home until my, all, my last resting place will be somewhere around here. So I'm not sure where that's going to be, but.
Black away from you, isn't it?
It could be, yeah, it could be. So, but yeah, it's been, I've been more than blessed and I do appreciate everything, the support. And I've seen a lot go on in the city over the years, so crazy. And when Lauren was talking about Grass Lake, it seems like we've always talked about Grass Lake. And I was visiting with him a little bit and he said Dale Swanson was the engineer at the time. And that goes back to when there's still a street and park department. So there's been a lot of change. And yeah, it's been good.
Your philosophy, I think, of leadership is definitely reflected in that, that deep respect that people have about you. So.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else have comments? Go ahead.
I was just going to say, thank you. Thanks for being you. And your leadership, I think, is showing with the transition also. And so you'll be missed. And but I know you'll, we'll see you.
Yep. We're in a good place. Two of the people that are coming in behind me, we're in a really good place. And they're going to continue the reputation of that, that area. So I think, I think we've done a good job in putting the right people in place.
Councilmember Davis?
I want to thank you for all your years that you put in here. I can see your love for your coworkers. And when we went on that street tour last summer, I was so impressed because you knew like every inch of every street. And that's pretty impressive.
Councilmember Osmas?
Again, thank you for your many years of service. How many?
Well, it'd be just short of 40. If I stayed till January, it'd be 40 years. But I said that means there's November, December in there. After last year, that was enough.
So.
We can round out.
Yeah, yeah. Just, just about as many years as I've been here. And for 33 years while I worked on the police department, I just so enjoyed. I think of sunshine and Wilmer fests and barricades and cones and hauling picnic benches for dare brat feeds. And just have appreciated you and your department for so many years. And going back to Gilbertson and that culture that you guys have fostered. And like you said, you have good people in place. I fully anticipate that that will continue. Just a great department that I always talk, can do attitude. Not come up with excuses for why we can't do something or shouldn't do something, but how can we get it done?
Yeah.
It's a, and you're at the helm of that and just appreciate that leadership. Thank you.
I appreciate that because you did recognize some people that were before me that, that set the stage for that. And it's, it's always good to do good, you know, it's, we figure it out. Sometimes some things have to wait a little bit to get it done, but we get it taken care of.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
One more. Just, I was lucky enough to be able to work with you and under your supervision for a few years. And that respect is real. It runs deep with those guys. They would do anything for you and, and do a lot of stuff for you. And so just thanks, Gary, and really appreciate everything you've done.
Thanks, Carl. Appreciate it. You bet.
Councilmember O'Brien?
Kudos. You know, you guys did amazing job. I, when I first started, I would get calls from the public and I would call your office, even on a weekend, and you'd get back to me. And you guys had somebody out there working on whether, whether it was a flooded intersection or whatever it was, they were there within minutes. I mean, I couldn't believe it. Neither could my neighbors. But that just goes to the, you know, you have such a great organization. They already knew what they're needed to do and that comes from the top. So thanks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Thank you. Thanks, Gary, for all the work you've done. I was here on the council when you were moving up the ladder and I, you asked me for support for being promoted and I was glad to help you with that. If I needed something, didn't matter what sport it was, call you and you'd get it done. And that was awesome. You're truly going to be
I appreciate that. And never in my wildest dreams, though, I guess I was going to be in the position I've been the last couple of years, but just the way things work. And I appreciate the people that entrusted me to do the best I could. And I always say, I always, my motto is to be honest and do the best I could. And it was what it was. So thank you.
Thank you, Gary, for the legacy that you're leaving and enjoy retirement. And we'll see you back here in two weeks, right? She's sitting right over there in the front row.
Kelsey told me she had a banner that says, goodbye tension and hello pensions.
Are there other community pride announcements? Go ahead, Councilmember Fagerly.
I just want to thank the committee for Rockin' Robins and Public Works and Police Department. They were awesome out there. Rotary Club, can't say enough about them. It was a great four weeks. Hopefully it continues.
All right, if there's no other, we're moving to our closed session. This portion of the regular meeting of the city council will be closed pursuant to Minnesota statutes, section 13D.
Apologies, Mayor Protem, members of the council. I just noticed that the property owner of the properties that we are going to go into closed session to discuss is here. My recommendation would be if you wish to hear from the property owner, that you hear from him now before closing the meeting.
I would agree. Mr. Paffrath, would you like to? Would you like to speak?
I just, I, no, I'm not sure. I hadn't prepared anything. I hadn't thought of anything in advance. Just considerable resources and investment have already gone into trying to get something going there. And I just leave it with you to make it. and I just leave it with you to make a decision.
Thank you. Mr. Scott, anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, I'll start over. This portion of the regular meeting of the city council will be closed pursuant to Minnesota Statutes, Section 13D 5, subdivision 3C. The following real property will be discussed separately in the closed session. Parcellets 95-672-1070, parcel 95-672-1000, parcel 95-672-1010, and parcel 95-672-1020. Is there a motion to close the meeting?
So moved. Second.
Let's vote on that motion.
That motion carries eight ayes, zero nays.
All right, the council will now move into closed.